We could.
Huh.
Man, they crack me up. And burn. I can feel it.
Welcome. We're in budget session number three. But before we get to our budget work sessions, we need to do some regular council business. So I'm going to call regular session of the Monroe County Council meeting to order for Tuesday, September 13th, 2022. Let's do a quick roll call. Counselor McKim.
Sure.
Counselor Crossley.
Here.
Counselor Deckard.
Here.
Counselor Iverson.
Here.
Counselor Munson.
Here.
Counselor Hawke. Counselor Hawke has not joined us yet. The rest of us are here and present in the Nat U Hill room. Does anyone wish to add or remove an item from tonight's regular session agenda? If not, then we will move on. Agenda is adopted and we will be at item number three from our legal department. As a reminder to council and the public, the first reading of this ordinance took place on August 9th, 2022. It was tabled to August 23rd. Oh, I'm sorry. It was then tabled at the August 23rd meeting, and this is the second reading and vote of ordinance 2022 dash 24.
Counsel, I move to approve ordinance 2022 dash 24, an ordinance to approve in fixed terms and conditions for the purchase of land.
Second.
Welcome, Mr. Cockro.
Yes, and thank you for tabling that last meeting. If you notice that the attached exhibit has one change to it. And that is to clarify some of the language about what happens with the two appraisals and the average of two appraisals. There is language in section 3.2 that still says we have to get the two appraisal so that the average is at or above that purchase price of 10 million, 20,000, but we took out any reference to the average of the appraisal price in the actual section where we talk about the purchase price. So the purchase price is set at 10 million, $20,000. If we don't get two appraisals above that, we can't purchase it pursuant to law. And so we, and that's what section 3.2 is about is letting us get out of the agreement if that occurs. Otherwise, this is the property we've talked intensely about at Fulton Pike. The purpose of the property is to use it to initially at least put a jail there. We're going through the rezone process. I believe we will be at that in front of the city council in October, or not city council, the State Plan Commission in October with that going on. Just kind of maybe a brief update. We've received both the phase one and the site assessment as well as today. We've received the jurisdictional waters and wetlands delineation report. So we've got reports coming in and moving forward on that. I also met with Bloomington Transit today, had a nice conversation about their thoughts on this. Clearly, they don't want to make any statements of whether this is appropriate spot or anything like that because that's not under bailiwick, but they are supportive that if it does, if it does happen, that they'll work with us to make sure we could get transit there.
I have a quick question for you.
Yes.
Those reports, are they going to be considered when someone takes a look at the assessment of, what's the right word that I'm searching for? Appraisal, appraisal?
Well, we have one appraisal already. We have a second appraisal that's already, that has been ordered. I guess I could offer it and make sure that the second appraiser knows about those reports. I have not seen anything in those reports that are, that I would think would materially change that. I think when we look at those reports, we see a lot of features on the property that are already not buildable. So I think I'm not, I'm not sure how they would utilize that, but I can certainly offer that to the person doing the second appraisal.
Okay. Yes.
I just wanted to make a public comment or comment here to express thanks for meeting with Bloomington Transit already. I know in yesterday's Community Justice Response Committee, the issue of transportation came up repeatedly as to, you know, whether or not we're going to, or which departments are going to be moving out there at all. And I know that was, that's a key concern of a lot of stakeholders. So thank you for keeping those lines of communication open. And also it's good news to hear that we're going to be going for the zoning folks in October. And I just really appreciate that update, too.
Any other comments or questions, Mr. McKim?
So I just wanted to make sure. So the closing date is set to be January before, January 1st, 2023. For that. So that sort of creates a drop dead on the, on the zoning issue. Is it your understanding that the seller would be a little bit flexible if we're right towards the end of the rezone? And it just hasn't happened by December 31st, but we've made good progress and we're well on our way?
He's not indicated that. I guess I anticipate that we'll get through the process and that we will get that through that process probably with the city council reviewing it in December. I do think that that's a fairly short window to get the process concluded and get the transaction concluded. To that end, I think at your September 27th meeting, we may try to go ahead and get the bond anticipation note process started. And so we may, we could talk about some of those kind of things at that point.
We're just cutting it a little close.
We are cutting it a little close.
All right. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions from council?
Yes. As you know, I was concerned about the way the contract was first written. And in your opinion, you feel like that the purchase price can be no more than what was quoted.
Yes.
In the contract, but that if the average of the two would be less than that, it would be the lesser amount. Is that correct?
If the average of two appraisals is.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Sorry. If the average of two appraisals is less than the purchase price, then we can cancel the contract. And then we'd have to talk with the seller to work out some other arrangement if necessary, but it will not be more.
And I'm late again. Also, if for whatever reason, when, when the county gets to the city, if we don't get it zoned for jail or whatever other features that we want on that ground, are we covered on that? Because all I was seeing was jail.
Well, what we've asked is there are two different zoning categories in the city zoning ordinance that allows for the jail as a conditional use. So what this contract says is we have to get it into one of those two zoning buckets before we have, before we, we move forward with the purchase.
It might be something that's not quite zoned as high as what a jail would be. It might be something we could put in there that's something less.
Yeah, it would be something that, that is a permitted conditional or a conditional use for there's, there's an additional process to get that conditional use to be a realized use. But if we get it to that zoning designation, we could use it for any of those zoning designations as well as we would go through the process to get it as a jail use as well.
I just wanted to, in addition to the comments that were made before, I also want to thank you for having engagement with Bloomington Transit, and I appreciate very much their consideration of this. One item of note, even beyond that property, there's a hospital just literally down the way from that. And so I think it would be awesome for the community to even be looking at it anyway, regardless of, of this, this area, this property. So that this is a very important contingent. I don't want to say contingent. This is a very important aspect to this. So I appreciate transit, meeting with you, talking with you. And I know they're going through a lot of expansion discussions.
And again, they did not commit to anything other than that. If, if this happened, that they would work with us to, to see if it's fine.
I just wanted to make sure that the, the public and those watching understood that earlier in that conversation, when you're talking about getting a bond and a note that, and this price of $10 million, that this is solely for the purchase of lands, correct?
Correct.
So we're not talking about a facility or a series of facilities at this point.
Not concretely, right?
Not concretely, but certainly the, the reason we are purchasing this property is for that type of facility. But we have, we're not designed it. We're not paid on any of those kinds of things to this point. This is for the purchase of property.
If, if you, if I didn't know you had a long budget session tonight, I kind of outlined kind of what I thought would, at the end of the day, we, the timeline we have. But my, I guess my, my anticipation is that that bond anticipation would eventually graduate into a, and get merged into a larger bond after all that work and design work had been completed to, to actually construct. So.
Well, I, we have a community justice meeting on Monday. So if you wanted to be more long-winded, I would maybe invite you to come to that.
Is it next Monday or is it two week and a half?
Is it two? Is it this?
I think it's next Monday because yesterday it was a rescheduled meeting from the first Monday of the month.
Well, I will put it on my calendar.
Looking forward to it.
All right.
All I have.
I have one more question. The conditional use that you said you would be then pursuing after the initial zoning change, is, is that in the hands of the zoning board, the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So same body, just another step in the process?
It's not the same body.
Tell me more.
It's not the Plan Commission, the City Council, it's the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I see. And we have reason to believe that they would be friendly to this suggestion.
I think if the, if the city rezoning, get, rezones the property with the intent of it being that use, I think there's a pretty good indication that that would be a direction that they would go.
Any other questions or comments from council?
So along the lines of this, this project, I know Councilman Iverson just pointed out, but also I think it's important for the public to know, too, that the first and third Mondays each month is the Community Justice Response Committee, as it was just renamed with the additional folks on the, the committee. So it's the first and third. And then I just highly encourage those that are watching this evening to, it's now been moved here to the Nat U Hill Room so that we can have more space for people to count. So I just encourage people that are watching tonight and maybe those that are here, which some of y'all are also on that committee, to come and, and listen to the things that we need. Because of course, this is the early baby steps of everything, but this is, this is a huge project that we are investing in and we cannot do things without community input and involvement. So I would just highly encourage those that are watching to watch, or if you are able to, to come in person.
Good reminder. Any other comments, council, comments, questions already been? Are, is there any public comment on this matter? None. Therefore, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Sorry about that. You guys got there quickly. Deckard.
Yes.
Iverson?
Yes.
Crossley?
Yes.
Munson?
Yes.
McKim?
Yes.
Wilt?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we move to item number four. It was another tabled item from our last work session in August.
Counsel, I move to approve the Technical Services Department's request for additional appropriations and fund 2502-0000 cable franchise user fees in the amount of $208,000 in the services category.
Second.
Welcome, Mr. Cross. How are you?
Good evening, counsel. How is everyone? What I have for you this evening, two of my lines in my budget really gotten to work out this year, and that's the telephone maintenance line and our Reaper Graphics line. With the telephone maintenance, it's due to an increased charge by AT&amp;T on some services. Also, we've implemented more wireless devices and desk phones and things across the county, which turned into an increased cost for us that wasn't originally budgeted for. The other line item is The other line item is our Reaper Graphics, which is our copying overage charges. Any contractual services for copy repair not covered under agreements and things of that nature. So I'm asking for a total of $208,000 to finish me out through December 31st of this year for those two lines.
Okay, are there questions or comments to my right? To my left? Yes.
I guess only just that we've sort of already had this debate in the context of your 2023 budget. And so it's very straightforward. And I appreciate you, as your liaison, I appreciate you having approached me early on about, about this need. And it's well justified.
Thank you for the time.
I spent a lot of time and effort to try to keep it as low as possible and to continue to reduce.
Thank you for your help on that. I appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions? So any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Wilt?
Yes.
Iverson?
Yes.
Crossley?
Yes.
Munson?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
McKim?
Yes.
Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Have a good evening.
You too. We now move to item number five.
Counsel, I move to approve the clerk's request to add account line 17101 overtime to fund 11190000 Clerk's Perpetuation Fund.
Second.
I received an email from the clerk. She is unable to attend and her chief deputy is unable to attend. So I was sent an email for the explanation of the overtime line that they're adding, asking to be just inserted into their budget, but they don't need appropriations. And it says the person that is currently in the budget will be putting extra hours in scanning court documents, shredding confidential documents, and helping out other areas in the office as needed. We are not asking for any additional funds at this time. Okay, so that's all I can tell you regarding the request to add an account line to the perpetuation budget.
Is there any discussion on this item? I don't know if we can ask questions, but yes.
I mean, okay, I guess I can't ask the question, but I guess I'd like to know what are the conditions under which overtime would be granted? I mean, what?
Until the money's gone.
Is it just until the money, until the money's gone? Or what, you know, do other departments have the ability to, to spend overtime to get extra work done?
Well, the answer to that question, I believe, is yes. All of departments were instructed that if they needed an overtime line, they could add one to their budget this year.
Okay.
Sorry, yes, for the next year.
For 2023.
Yes, yes, which is why they maybe didn't have one before.
Well, I regret that that kind of message would have gone out because many of us worked very, very hard to get rid of those overtime lines. And we know that they were abused in the past. I don't want to point fingers to just exactly who all abused them, but those of us been around for a while, we know that they were abused. And I think we need to continue to try to reduce the use of overtime rather than to increase it. So when was the decision made to suggest that they add that on there? Late July.
I beg pardon?
Earlier than that.
It was, it was in, yeah, it was May?
May. It was a while back. And I agree that we should discourage, you know, the abuse of an overtime line for sure. And I do question if shredding rises to, you know, level of needing to pay time and a half as a project in and of itself, that seems ridiculous to me.
Yep.
Yeah, I would just hire extra hour. I would be more inclined to put that in hourly and pay straight time.
Yeah.
Anything?
I was just gonna add.
I was just going to comment in a similar vein that without further explanation from the clerk, I don't see how this makes any sense to move forward with appropriating funds for overtime. Certainly not for shredding.
And to be clear, though, she wasn't planning to appropriate. She wanted just to create the line and then move money into it. Just to be clear.
Right, so she wouldn't need to have an appropriation.
Right.
She could just use unexpended staff time.
Yes.
But certainly hiring hourly workers would be a much preferred approach.
Correct. Yes.
I am of a mind that if a department needs overtime, that we don't scuttle overtime, that they have a line for it and that it is more transparently recorded in the public, particularly when it comes to services that have to be performed for the community. I can't speak to this particular request or this particular duty. I think only the clerk can do that. But I, I recognize that there are things that go on in departments with counters and people coming to the counters where occasionally things may not fit within the confines of a calendar week or two weeks. And look, it'd be better to record that, be accurate, provide the service to the community. And then, of course, every department head, public official in this council is answerable to the public for that very public line in which you have overtime. I would be worried if things were not getting done. And also, we were making people feel like they had to cram things into the hours of the week or figure other things out or work outside of a job description. That's just my general comments on overtime. I can't speak to the specifics here, but I'd rather record it and be realistic and discourage it than, than not.
Yes, Michelle, I'm gonna get a comment from her.
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry. They said the mics are very hot tonight, so I'm getting some feedback. So if you'll recall, the auditor asked for overtime last year, which would be for the 2022 budget. And you guys requested that she give a detail of what she was going to use that overtime for and that the overtime was for like one-time kind of projects, not like an ongoing, you know, kind of statements that it seems like this is going to be. So, you know, I know that you have requested departments to, you know, give you details on how they're going to use that. So she wanted me to bring that to your remembrance.
I still remember the, for the auditor, it was for the election and getting payroll processed for the election worker, poll workers in a short period of time, right? In a timely manner, I guess.
Right.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes, I think the council needs to be always aware that when somebody says, oh, we just want this now, but we don't need an additional appropriation. But then, I mean, I think you'll see that in some of these budgets. But then, if they spend it down because they're spending it at time and a half, it'll get spent down quicker and then they're not going to have the money there to do perhaps what they need to do. And so, I mean, unless there's some kind of urgent need to get these things shredded quicker, I don't see why we wouldn't pay regular time for it. I won't support it, but that's just me. I've seen it too much in the past, be not fair to all departments.
How often do we receive a report on overtime usage by the departments? I mean, do we, we get those regularly, but not often?
Yeah, we, so basically a person would get comp time unless they are a worker that is exempt from comp time. So they would accumulate comp time. Comp time accumulates an hour and a half, just exactly with the same overtime rules because it's federal. And then twice, and then double time for past so many hours in a certain period. Now, we have a two-week period, so that's usually what we, you know, it's 80 hours for a two-week period. So I'm not sure which workers they're talking about. I would assume they would have to be, they couldn't be exempt, right? They have to be non-exempt. But, and I, and I question whether maybe this is for election to emergency work. I don't know. But I just know you guys did grill me pretty thoroughly to make sure that it was not work that can be done on a part-time basis, a part-time worker. And, and I think that's, that's really where you're headed with, with this is, is this something that has to be done timely and you can't quickly get somebody to do it? And that is definitely what it is with my workers. You want them paid, so we run special payrolls in, on an emergency basis to pay the poll workers.
So it's conceivable that the documents that are being shredded are of a sensitive nature? And therefore, perhaps she wouldn't want certain employees to have access? I mean, I'm trying to follow some logic and then perhaps? Okay, thoughts?
Would this make sense as a discussion item where the clerk could come talk about it at a different meeting?
I think so.
I agree. I will make a motion.
I just wanted to let you know that Ms. Molly here did receive an email that the clerk will not be available for the September 27th. So we would probably want to do that to an October meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Well, this could be tabled to any, I mean, it's not an appropriation, so we don't need to worry about a specific time. Right, yeah. We just tabled.
Counsel, I move to table the clerk's request to, on item number five, to a meeting indefinitely.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion to table, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And we will move to item six.
Counsel, I move to approve the request to amend the 2022 salary ordinance in the elected officials' compensation section and add account line 17796 voter registration per DM to fund 12150010 election fund voter registration with a rate of $6.50 per day for 246 workdays per year, along with the detailed information as set out on the agenda.
I'm not seconding because I don't see it actually on the agenda, printed agenda that's on our-
It's on the amended agenda on the website, but it's on the printed agenda we have before us. So I'll second. So the public can see this on the website and.
I don't really care if it's printed. I just want to make sure that the correct one is what the public was told. Okay.
Can T S D put the amended agenda on the screen for us?
I think, yeah, just for the record, I seconded the motion.
Sorry, I didn't hear that. So the clerk is not here. And we received communication from the clerk's attorney asking to re-table this because they couldn't be here this evening. So I'm going to, so I'm going to table it to September 27th, which is our work session meeting. I'm not saying I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion to do that, sorry. Hopefully you all agree. But I do want to say that this is a difficult thing to keep pushing out because since the clerk has retained counsel, we can't really communicate directly. So I'm inviting her through her attorney to write down whatever she needs to share with us and pass it along to our attorney so that we do not have to table this again. And I think that's all I have to say about that. Do I need, can I ask for unanimous consent?
Yes, I can, or I can do a roll call, whichever you'd like. How about a roll call?
Okay.
For this, since it's-
So I would like to, I move that we table this item to Tuesday, September 27th on the work session.
Second.
Is, is there any further discussion on that?
But that at least explains that I was like, I thought it was originally on the agenda and then I thought it was being removed and then I see that it's removed, but then it's read as a motion. Which way are we going? It's all clear now.
Is it though?
Sorry, I asked Courtney to print agendas for me and I didn't specify which ones.
Is there any public comment on this item? I guess this tabling of this item. All right, so may I have a roll call vote?
Yes, this roll call vote is for Kate's motion to table number six. Marty Hawk?
Counselor Hawk, I think she said.
Yes.
McKim?
Yes.
Crossley?
Yes.
Iverson?
Yes.
Wilt?
Yes.
Munson?
Yes.
Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We, that concludes our regular session meeting. So we adjourn this portion and we will now move to the 2023 budget work session portion of our evening. Yes.
Counselor Wilt, the attorney has advised me, I didn't say the exact date that it was tabled to, and she'd like me to repeat it for the public record. September 27th, because 22nd and 27th does sound very similar. It's the 27th, Tuesday, the 27th.
Thank you. So I'll call to order the third session of the 2023 budget work session reviews to receive and discuss departmental budget requests. I'd like to note for the record again, that council members are all here present in the Nat U Hill meeting room. And I'd like to remind everybody that this is not the final approval of your 2023 Monroe County annual budget, nor is it the formal budget hearing. The public hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, October 4th at 5:30 PM. And the budget final adoption will occur on Tuesday, October 18th at 5:30 PM. The public can make comment regarding a budget during either of those meetings. Departments will be invited to join us here tonight in the Nat U Hill Room or via Zoom. And departments have been allotted an amount of time for their budget review based on last year's presentation time. As always, we can extend the time as needed, but we need to be mindful and keep our discussion to the budget reviews. Departments within your allotted time, please explain any increases, decreases, additions to your budget. Also, then we will discuss, have a brief time for questions and answers. And then council will have the opportunity tonight to make any recommendations to increase or decrease account lines based on that discussion. And we will be taking voice votes to approve the department's reviewed budget request. And again, it's not the final approval, but it's just a recognition of the request as presented or amended by council. Any comments before we get started? All right. Do, do we have any updates to budget numbers based on changes from our last budget session? Either from Kim or Jeff?
I won't do a presentation this time, just to let everybody know that that, both through Kim and I have continuously updated the draft 4B in the Dropbox. So it's, it is current with everything we know. And obviously, we're going to hear at least one department, a couple of departments that may affect that, affect those numbers. I don't know that there's anything important to, particularly to call attention to other than when we discuss the aviation budget, there may be, we may want to talk a little bit about making sure there's some extra cash balance in case, in case we need to make future salary adjustments.
Did you make the adjustments according to the email we received from council office about some of the devil budgeting or there was an entire-
No, because- No, because we haven't voted on those.
Right.
Right. Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, great. Are there any questions or comments from counsel on that update? Thank you. Um, we'll start then with item four A on the agenda, which is our public defender's office. And and we're going to hear an update that was tabled from our last session on the eighth.
Counsel, I wish to reopen for discussion and review fund one zero 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 two seven one general fund public defender category request of one million, five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollar, pardon me, one million, five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars in the personnel category, nine thousand dollars in the supplies category, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, fifty-one dollars in the services category for a total of one million, seven hundred, four thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Second.
Welcome again.
Thank you.
It was nice of you to come.
Thank you, Madam Counselperson and members of the council. My name is Michael Hunt.
And then make sure it's green.
I don't think it works.
How about now? You, I don't know, you may need to move closer to it. That one is not particularly hot.
That one might be better, sorry.
You can bend it, yeah.
How about now?
That's great.
There you go.
Let me, first of all, well, Michael Hunt from the public defender's office and Heather Stuffel, who's my executive assistant. This may get me into trouble, but I want to commend the council on the presentation on the screens because it's much better than it had been. However, having said that, the acoustics are terrible. They're just dismal. And if if this is a public hearing, the public back there with that air conditioner, he can't hear anything. So, okay. Having said that. We're getting thumbs up from the back of the room, so. Not sure what that means. We were here last time and Counselor McKim pointed out that there was some apparent discrepancy. It didn't look correct. And he told us we didn't have to come back, but we would check it out. So I think Michelle and Ms. Stuffel have worked on that and hopefully we have have it worked out. And I will let either one of them tell you.
Okay, so what happened was, um, departments, we have updated account lines for new WIS titles or job descriptions. And what happened was, um, I believe that this account line right here in a, which I'm showing is one zero zero seven, which is called first deputy, was typed over by the new account line. Well, when that happened, that removes all of that information going across. And so when that happened, it also removes it from the 2022 totals. And so that's why it looked like we were adding two positions to that position, or, you know, it was such a significant change. So with that, we, I put those back in, which brought the 2022 adopted budget back up to where it's supposed to be. And then we also, as we were looking, we discovered that the health self-insurance was out of the whack with compared to what she needed. So we, you should have got some notes on that. So, um, and the same thing happened when we get to the supplemental. There's some account lines were just typed over and the full-time insurance was a little out of whack. So one budget she over-budgeted in the health insurance and then the other one she under-budgeted. So I sent to you guys the information on what needs to be done in this, these budgets.
Counsel, I move we set line one eight zero zero one full-time self-insurance, that we reduce it to one hundred and ninety-two thousand. Second. So the upshot is that's the only thing we actually need to change then.
Sorry. Are there any questions or or comments from counsel? All right, then. I think you're making corrections. Got it? All right. All in favor of amending the line as stated by Counselor McKim, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Say nay. I'm stalling so that she can type. Motion passes.
Okay, the new personnel line has been updated.
All right, I'm going to try to reread this, okay? Counsel, I wish to reopen for discussion or review fund one zero 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 two seven one general fund public defender with category requests of one million, five hundred, forty-five thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars in the personnel category, nine thousand dollars in the supplies category, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, fifty-one dollars. Right, in the services category for total of one million, six hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars.
We don't, we don't actually need to do a motion. It's just, he's just reading the bottom lines.
Sounds good. So we are good to with that line. Are there any other comments or questions on this budget? All right. Um, then all those in favor of accepting the public defender's general fund budget request, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Thanks for being here. Or B.
Counsel, I moved open for discussion and review fund one two zero 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 zero, public defender supplemental category requests of in the personnel category, one million, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars for a total of one million, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars.
Second, and counsel, I move we set line one eight zero zero one full-time self-insurance to one hundred and twenty thousand.
Second.
Are there any questions about this item? Uh, all those in favor of changing the line as stated by Counselor McKim, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
It's updated.
Okay. I'm going to reread this as it should be in fund one two zero 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 zero, public defender supplemental. It'll be in personnel, one million, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars for a total of one million, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars.
Fantastic. Are there any questions or comments on this budget? All right. All those in favor of accepting the public defender supplemental budget request, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. So that concludes the.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes. And now we have item number five, the planning department.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund one zero 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 seven nine general fund planning category requests of seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars in the personnel category, six thousand, six hundred and six dollars in the supplies category, thirty-five thousand, one hundred dollars in the services category for a total of seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Second.
Welcome, Ms. Nestor.
Hi, it's Nestor Jelin, sorry. That's okay. Forgot. Um, I just have a few updates that I can give you from the spreadsheet that we've submitted. Kim was super helpful. She caught that we had a little bit of a shortage in our FICA budget line, but I think that's corrected in the version that they're seeing. So I can talk a little bit about how we've moved some funds around from the 2022 to the 2023 proposed budgets, but it's all net neutral. So we've just moved some money around from training and travel into refunds. We've reduced printing subscriptions, office supplies, and we put that money into professional services, which is for work such as surveyors or aerial imagery, things like that that we need in our office. So we're hoping we don't have as much transfer, inline transfers. Thank you. And then I just wanted to take a minute to note that we've actually been short-staffed for most of 2022. We're hoping to become fully staffed this month. And that relates to our consultant fees, which are not on this sheet because we're encumbering those fees. But if we do need more consultant fees for our Monroe C D O, we're hoping that we can come back to the amount of staffing budget line that we were short for 2022 that we didn't expend. And if we need that money, we can allocate it there. Probably that wouldn't be until next year if we needed it all. And then I know we presented to you July twenty-six, 2022. So I have some answers to, I think, some of the questions that were asked at that meeting, and I can go over some of those just real quick. Our Monroe C D O dot com website is where you can go to find updates for the C D O. There was a question about how many views we get to our website. It's about two hundred views per month. There was a question about average turnaround time for planning reviews of building permits. We actually were able to do a quick calculation of about four hundred eighty-eight building permits, taking out outliers over twenty days, which means that likely they needed another planning process, such as a variance or a rezone, which takes quite a bit of time before we can issue the permit. So the average turnaround time of those four hundred eighty-eight permits, removing those outliers, was three and a half days. And then there was a question about the average price of a new home in Monroe County. I think I found a statistic just generally nationally, it's priced between three hundred and sixty and three hundred and eighty thousand. Very high, yes, for a new, new construction. So those were the the questions and follow-up that I wanted to get from July, but I can take any questions you have about the budget.
Thank you. Is that the average price of a newly built home?
Yes, new construction.
New construction.
Got it.
Okay. Um, are there any questions on the planning budget items to my right? My left?
Could I make a comment?
Sure.
You know, at that July meeting, I believe it was a July meeting, when I mentioned that this couple was having so much trouble getting an answer. And so you suggested they contact you, and they did. And they let me know that that was a very pleasant meeting with you and that hopefully that's all been worked out. So I appreciate that because it is just fixing these problems that might seem little, but they're really big to the individuals it's happening to. So I appreciate that help.
Sure. Yeah, for anyone listening, our office phone number, if anyone needs to ask any questions, it's eight one two three four nine two five six zero. Or you can email us at planningoffice@co.monroe.in.us and we'd be glad to answer your questions.
And the important part of that entire situation was to make certain that when people ask for help or there are steps they need to take, that they are given something that they can check off and you're checking off so they know any deadlines they're supposed to make because people in general just don't know. They're going to come to your office. They don't know. They've never done it before. So I thank you.
Sure.
I noticed in your supplies category that you left fuel flat. Do you anticipate coming before us for initial appropriation in the future? Or are you just seeing that, you know, your transportation costs are pretty low or I just wanted to ask about that?
So in the supplies category, office supplies, you mean?
No, I I meant fuel.
Oh, fuel, yes. We have one car for our whole department, so that's self-limiting. So we actually stay within that line pretty well, as you could see in years past, so.
Any other questions or comments? Well, okay. In that case, all those in favor of accepting the planning department's general fund budget request, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. That concludes the review of your budget. Thanks. Next, we have item six, which is the aviation department.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund one one zero seven zero 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 aviation category requests of seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred, pardon me, let me try that again. Seven hundred, seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars in the personnel category, eighty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars in the supplies category, four hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred dollars in the services category, one hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in the capital category for a total of one million, four hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Second.
Welcome again.
Hi, good evening.
Can you tell us a little bit about budget?
Okay. Still getting used to these readers. You hit, you hit, I was forty-two is where the wheels fell off the bus.
It happens.
Right. In the in the personnel section, we're just going with the, what we were given by, not the council office for the the COLAs, except for the two positions where we kind of still have two outstanding requests with counsel that we're working through. In fact, the the desk audit for the the, thank you, for the operations manager is going on Thursday. So that's great. So outside of that, moving into the the two thousands here. I'll start working down the lines where we have some changes. Twenty-one fifty, building electrical. That was lowered to just reflect our trend, our spending trends. Building hardware at twenty-one sixty was lowered as well. Twenty-one seventy, we increased that from fifty-five hundred to seventy-five hundred. Although we've been, although this year we're on track to spend two times that amount. Shop and maintenance supplies, same issue. We're on track to spend two times that amount, but we're requesting a two thousand dollar increase there. Runway de-icer, line twenty-three, three zero one. We're adjusting that to what we spend, what we realistically spend. And that chemical has in the last year has significantly jumped in price, which is really unfortunate. Line two four two zero two, we added five percent there, although we're really nervous that that's going to shoot way beyond that. Vehicle repairs, line three thousand four. We spent twice as much as we have in the past, but we're asking for a one thousand dollar increase there. Training and travel, we're going to add a little bit there. We're optimistic that we can fill two open positions next year. With that, there'll be some increased need for training and travel there as well. We're anticipating that travel will remain elevated as well next year. Telephone and postage has really gone up on us. We've spent twice as much as we have in the past. We're asking for fifty percent increase there. We lowered line thirty-one fifty. We have a security fence repair project going on that's coming along nicely. So we've taken that from forty to twenty thousand. Line thirty-one eighty publications and dues, we're asking for an increase there. We, that we've spent twice as much as we have in the past as well. Gas, oil and lube in line thirty-seven hundred. We're, we're asking for an increase there as well as. We're, we're asking for an increase there as well as that's mostly our vehicle fuel, cutting grass. We've got about 700 acres of grass that have to get mowed. So we've been hit pretty hard with that and with that cost. 33008, other insurance, we added per, per for the insurance company's recommendation, we added 10% there. Utilities, 36003, small increase there. We're hoping that'll hold it, hold it through the next year. Website design. We've increased that from 15 to 3,000. And then in the capital, we just kind of, we had the same amount of money in our capital section. We're just moving numbers around to account for fertilizer, which is the largest increase, which you can see, it goes from 17,000 to 68,000. And that's after dealing with our, our, our farmer and our agricultural consultant. Fertilizer costs have gone up 3 to 400% as it stands today. So we programmed a 400% increase for fertilizer, just to be safe. We're really hoping that that comes down. But we're, we're farming that field, we're farming those fields and we just don't, we, we have, we have to fertilize that or else when we go out for, you know, rebid on, on that, on that farm, the soil, which is already kind of in poor condition, will just it'll get worse and the interest for that farming contract will fall down because no one's going to get any yields out of these fields. So we just, we just had to program that in with what today's costs reflect. And then we're trying to acquire another vehicle for operations. So that's why furniture, air traffic control equipment, ARF equipment, tools and equipment were all lowered to just move those, move those dollars into a vehicle purchase. Those are really all of the lines where we have any kind of changes. And mostly, when I, when I look at it overall, it's really just responding to the, the price increases that we see in utilities across the board.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions for this budget on my right?
I do. Thanks for being here and I think I want to go down to telephone and postage. That's 30111. And the reason I want to ask about this is we just heard from our technical services department about, you know, the investment they're making in phones and data plans, things like that. Are your phones at all tied to TSDs? Are they a separate system? Like, can you explain something about that?
It's a separate system. We, for a while, we were on the same, we, we did have the same cellular phones, but we have our own accounts and we pay for everything ourselves. And I think it's, it was initially with AT&amp;T. But what we found was AT&amp;T service didn't work at the airport. So we had to, we had to dump AT&amp;T and go with Verizon, which was a little bit more, but we also pay for our own landlines. And we, we have a, basically what we do is broadband through Smithville and then we pay for a separate voice over IP phone system. So we are, we are on our own. Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
And we do spend a lot on postage, which is crazy. We, we bought a thousand stamps today. And I remember when postage was, was a lot cheaper, but we spent almost $700 on stamps today.
A thousand stamps.
Yeah, we have, we're mailing out our own claims again. And so Amy, my financial manager put in this request for, you know, 600, 700 stamps today. And I was like, what is this? She's like, she's like, they're not doing it anymore.
I can't remember the last time I used a stamp.
Yeah.
So I have a question, please, about vehicle purchase.
Yes.
In your 2020 budget, you had a vehicle purchase for 51,910. Did you purchase a vehicle that year?
In 2020? Yes, we did. Yeah, we purchased a crew car for that year.
And tell us about what your plan is for 2023.
So what we want to do there is purchase a vehicle that can be mixed use vehicle and a light duty vehicle. Every vehicle we have right now is heavy duty body on frame because they can serve a dual purpose for plowing snow. This one's going to be more light duty for operations, like when I have to run around, do vehicle airport tours. And then we also, the plan is to offer that vehicle as a courtesy vehicle to people who fly into our airport and need to run into town for a few hours. It's a common feature at a lot of airports. We don't have that now. So we ran that by who's our insurance company? With Lauren Woods. We ran that by the insurance company and that they're, they're okay with that as long as we limit that to a 50 mile radius and less than 24 hours of use. But that's the plan. It'll be, it'll be an attraction and a draw for the airport rate as we see it.
So I appreciate that, but that amenity comes with a large increase in your, your capital category from 78,000 last year to 143,000 this year. So I'm looking at the, the very large increase here. And so I question that.
Right. It is an increase, but the bulk of that increase, however, comes from, actually, I think all of that increase comes from the 400% increase in fertilizer, seed and fertilizer in line 4100. And, and, and that's just going off of today's prices for fertilizer. If it goes up even more, we won't be able to fertilize everything. And I don't really anticipate buying a what is it?
Yes, Carlos, I have a question. So seed and fertilizers in the 4,000 lines, and that is not a capital expense. That's a supply expense. So would you be okay if the, the council does a friendly amendment to move it that $68,000 to lawn chemicals? Because really seed and fertilizer sort of lawn. Okay. Is it, is it in the 2,000? Okay. Because fertilizer is definitely a lawn chemical, for sure. So I just, I'm not comfortable, especially with Gatsby, having this in capital. Because we just, we just actually got wrote up for capital problem.
So do you apply the fertilizer yourself or is it a service that you contract for?
Uh, we, it's, it's in the contract for the farmer who fields, who farms our, our fields. We buy the fertilizer, he applies it, but we don't have an, we don't have a separate contract.
Okay. So it does sound like supply then.
Okay. So now I have another question. It's the actual product that you're buying, not the process that you're buying.
Correct.
Yeah, that's a 2,000 expense.
The fertilizer.
Can I?
Do you have it ready?
Can I tell him what number? Okay. All right. It needs to, I think, be in 23940, which is called seed, mulch, compost and planting. And that was what I wanted to say to you.
Said 23940.
23940.
All right. Well, if you want to do that. Counsel, I move we reduce line 40100 seed and fertilizer from $68,000 to zero and set line 23940 seed and compost, mulch and planting to $68,000. Second.
All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes? Okay. You had.
I, I, I was just going to say, I appreciate the further explanation on the vehicle. Eyebrows went up a little on that one. I'm, I'm not so sure about that expense, given some substantial increases in the proposal that we're looking at. So we may need to have a little bit of flexibility on that particular item. It just, it kind of stands out. I understand the sentimentality or thought process behind it, but I'm not sure about that one quite yet.
Yeah. Comments, questions to my left? With Kim.
You don't. Well, it's okay. Hello. Always like when you come in and give presentations, it's very enthusiastic. Um, so I just had a quick question. It's a minor question. I saw the increase for the website design. I just wanted to see if you could just speak to, because the website looks really good, but I just wanted to know what the, what the increase was about.
So you're looking, yeah, so it looks nice. It's not functional. Yeah, it's, it's really pretty, but there's no information for pilots who are flying in. We want to put a, a portal in there where our tenants can pay their, their lease on there. It's just what we have right now. It's just, it's pretty, but there's, it's not functional. Yeah. I, I think initially it was done, I think it was done by like, it was done for free initially by, I think, an IU intern or something like that.
Counsel, McKim.
Yeah. So, so first of all, how, how much does the farming contract yield?
I don't have that number offhand right now. I, I think we're in the ballpark. Boy, I don't have that number offhand.
Would you like Bree to look it up?
Well, I'm just, I mean, my, my question is just, I'd like to know at what point stop spending on fertilizer and just say, oh, okay.
Yeah. And the, the farm contract expires in January. And we're, we're going to have to start thinking about what we're going to do if we go for open bid again or extend with the current farmer. And if we do offer an extension, there's, there's got to be, there's got to be some sort of increase there. But I think offhand, we're looking around. Can someone pull that number up for me right now? You guys have that?
Is it greater than 68,000?
Yeah, it's much greater. I think it's, we're, we're covering that, but I think it's going to eat into maybe half of what we take out. I think we're hovering around 100,000 that we make off of that farm. I mean, when I sat, you know, when I sat in that meeting and they're saying, and they showed me the numbers too, like 400% high right now. Because I had been watching the news and it's covered in the news and I was like really apprehensive about this meeting. But that's just the fact of what it is right now. And next year was supposed to be the big year where we dump a lot of extra fertilizer to kind of get the farm where we want it. And I don't, we're not going to be able to do that. Right?
Then I guess my other question is on, on, on the vehicle. I mean, I'm, how dire, are, are you retiring an exist, a, a, an existing vehicle? Or are you adding to the fleet?
It would be an addition.
Addition. So I mean, how, you know, I guess how, how much of an imposition would be to hold off for a year on that purchase? I mean, that's, it, it is pretty, it is pretty large, particularly when we're, you know, we're, we're trying to work on salaries, in fact, for your government.
I mean, this is a new vehicle. I can also purchase used. You know, what's that?
It's very difficult to purchase a used vehicle versus new. Yes.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, we can, we can hold off. I can hold off on that. I mean, it's, it's not, it's, it's not a deal breaker. It's what we would like to do. A lot of times our staff are using, you know, personal vehicles and but it's, it's what we want to do, but it's not going to, it's not going to stop us from doing what we do out there.
That's the sort of thing, I don't know, that I, I see using maybe reversions at the end of the year, unspent appropriations or something like that. So, you know, it's, it's, it's definitely, you still could definitely get it. I'm just, I wouldn't include it in the budget. I'd be comfortable, it sounds like several of my colleagues may feel the same way. And I would certainly be happy to support a motion to remove it from the budget with the idea that, you know, we can look out of reversions at the end of the year for an additional.
Mike, I know that you mentioned how impossible it is to find a good used vehicle. Now, I know that. So I would, you know, you, if you should happen to come along, something that really looks perfect at a much more reasonable price. Certainly you could come and discuss it at that time. But until then, as Councilmember McKim said, if, if you're able to save back and have some reversions at the end of the year, you might have dollars there to accomplish what you're talking about. But because we are trying to make sure that there's dollars there for salaries, we, we don't want to spend it on a car and then you have no one to drive it. So that doesn't work.
Sure.
Before I offer the motion, let me just offer, I want you to have the things you need to have. Absolutely. I agree with the thought process of work, work towards this perhaps in reversion towards the end of the year, if, if that works itself out or a better opportunity arises. So counsel, I'm going to, I'm going to offer I lost my place here. Sorry. I'm going to offer an amendment to this grid that line 41104 vehicle purchase be amended down to $0.
Second.
Any further comments or questions on this motion? All right. All in favor of the motion as red, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. How many acres? What?
I thought Kim had some.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. How many acres are in production?
Over 500. That's about 565 acres, I believe.
Is it? You know what? Do you know what he's growing?
I'm sorry?
Is he growing corn?
It's a, it's a mixture of mostly, it's mostly soybeans this year. Yeah.
Does it change year to year?
They try to rotate a little bit, you know, to keep the ground healthy. They used to do corn, but the problem is corn gets tall and we have to have these vision clearances in between the runways and the taxiways. So there is some corn in the far off fields. The closer we get to the airfield and the movement area, it's mostly soybean.
Do you ever let one, let part of it just lie fallow for a little bit?
Uh, well, we try, we, we, yeah, we try to farm responsibly. And so sometimes you do want to give it a year off. There is one field this year that's been given a year off, but that's mostly for an erosion control project that we're doing. Our farmer worked with USDA and they received a, a grant to do a lot of repairs to the field and, and drainage. So that, that field was given a year off this year. But it's, when they started, when the airport board really started looking at the fields that they, the farm on the airport and working with consultants, they really got to see that the soil is in very poor condition. I want to say too, but it wasn't the person who had the, the farm contract previously didn't really reinvest in the, in the soil and just kind of rob the soil every year. So there's a lot of build back that's having to take place and things are going in the right direction. And we are working with, you know, conservation and the USDA to, to properly manage the field. So we're doing what we can.
Thank you.
Good question. Yeah. I've learned more about farming in, in airport management than I ever thought I would have. Yeah. It's really cool, like the whole cover crop concept. We do cover crops and yeah.
Thanks for indulging me. Um, other questions or comments for this budget?
One comment for certain. One comment for certain is this hopefully will give everybody a lot more appreciation for the farmers here in Monroe County and what they're up against. Because when we're looking at it in this budget, can you imagine if it's your farm and you're trying to make a living for your family? So.
I think I've got new totals to read.
I just wanted to remind the council that the airport operations manager line is over the grid amount that we currently have and we are awaiting the desk audit. So I didn't know if you wanted to adjust that, you know, or leave it as is for now. Because it, if we go by what is in our grid for twenty twenty-three, it's fifty-five, one forty-one, and they have requested seventy-seven, seven seventy-two.
I would entertain a motion to keep it within the grid and then we'll deal with that when it comes back.
And then just make sure we leave enough cash in the, in the fund where we say, set levies to do that. Yeah.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
That's the part that concerned me. I know a few days ago, when the auditor said that at the end of the day, then she would be moving around the levies in order to move more money into general. But this is one we would rather not have it taken from because as a reminder, we cannot, if they need it next year, we can't get, take it from county general and move it over because we're not allowed in the frozen levy to move from one fund to the next. I'm sorry, you probably already know this, but I just wanted to make sure we were all aware. So we wanna make sure that, that there's enough dollars left in there in case we do move forward with those raises.
And I'm sorry, what is that correct number according to the grid?
Fifty-five, one forty-one. So I, I also wanted to point out and, but the airport director isn't SO. And per our proposed grids, that amount is sorry. Is set for ninety-five, five seventy-six. And they have in their budget one hundred, one hundred and fifteen thousand. So if you wanna make that adjustment until, or, but he isn't SO, so he doesn't go on a grid. So that is totally discussion up to you guys with regards to where you would like him to be set.
Right. Counsel, I move we set line one, three, five, one, four, airport operations manager back to the grid amount of fifty-five thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars. Second.
Is there any council discussion on the motion? Yes.
I just wanna thank Michelle for catching this and thank you for being the council administrator, making sure we're keeping up with what we set for our, our guidelines. Really appreciate that.
Any other comments or questions? All right.
I, I do hope the audit comes, comes out well, because that, that is a, a very low amount for that position.
Agreed. But I don't feel comfortable with it being outside.
Yeah, no, no.
I would just like to encourage the airport staff to just because this was reduced for today, that doesn't mean that's where it's going to stay. Because we don't want anybody leaving Monroe County government.
Well, he's leaving. He's leaving. Sure.
We really rely on the airport staff for all kinds of things that create business and jobs right here. Just the other day, we were in discussion and, and some of the big grocery stores bring in supplies through the airport. Well, you know, other big stores that we are accustomed to going to and think that those supplies will be there. You think they're all gonna come in on a truck, but no, some of them come in on, by plane. So it might be interesting to see a list of that so that we can be reminded how much we do rely on the airport and we don't even know it.
True.
All right. Did we vote on your motion yet? I'm sorry. I'm completely lost. Okay. My apologies.
So, so we're reducing that line today for him today, but we're gonna keep that levy funded or?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, that's what we're agreeing to do. We still, we don't vote on rates and levies to the end.
Yeah, sure. But that's the intent. Yeah. Cause I'm, I'm optimistic that we'll take care of that position. I just, I was advised to put that number in the budget.
This isn't meant like a cur, like a correction.
Sure.
Trying to make things, you know, the way.
Good deal.
The way they should look and be, yes, auditor.
Um, yeah, the difference here is like twenty-two thousand dollars. And we earmark like twenty percent in the cash balance at the end.
Yeah.
So it's insignificant when it comes to that amount that we keep and reserve.
So now we're calling it insignificant. Great.
I didn't want you to worry about the frozen levy being manipulated.
Right, right. Okay. All in favor of reducing the line as stated in Counselor McKim's motion, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Is there any further discussion of the aviation budget?
I guess I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna make any motion to change it right now. I'm not, I, I have to admit, I've not spent time analyzing the director salary issue. I know that came up at the last time. So we'll still have to have that discussion when we do salary ordinance. I'm not gonna make any motion to reduce it right now. I'm just, I'm, I haven't come to a number that I support yet, but that's.
I'm sort of.
Since that's an SO, it can really be anything.
Other, other thoughts? From counsel?
All right. So to be clear, the salary you reduced was the assistant and not.
Cause that was on a grid, right?
The SO is not a grid.
Right.
So why would we say we have to adjust it to the grid? It's not on.
It's not exactly.
All right. All those in favor of accepting the aviation department's budget request, say aye.
Oh wait, do we have a?
Oh, I forgot. We got, I'm sorry. We have more numbers.
I, I'm also adjusting the fight in the fur. So.
Talk amongst yourselves.
This is the time I can ask questions while she's doing the work. So in a previous meeting, we had discussed that you were looking into various smaller airlines to come in and do commercial flights, but there are smaller airlines. What's the status on that? What, what are you looking at?
Right now, from what I know, they're not going, they're not expanding anywhere or anything. There's a, I don't know how, how much you guys follow the industry, but there's a severe pilot shortage in the industry right now. Which was initiated by the, the COVID pandemic. A lot at the, what I call the, the established carriers, the legacy carriers like United, American, they have a lot, they had a lot of the pilots who retired. And never came back. So the legacies, what they typically do is they'll reach down to the regional airlines and they, they pull from that pool. So the Regional Airline Association got, in the last few years, has, has been devastated. And when you, when you hear about the six hundred, eight hundred thousand pilot shortage, it's mostly from the regionals. And then the regionals pull from those little airlines that we had discussed at that previous meeting. These boutique airlines or the charter companies. So those guys, they just, they, they, they've had to cancel a lot of their services or routes because they're just nobody. The minute somebody gets fifteen hundred hours, boom, they're, they're flying for an airline somewhere. So when it comes to like a market like Bloomington, where it would be served by one of those boutique airlines or like a regional, they're not adding any services right now. They're just, they're trying to maintain what they have now. But they've even canceled, they've canceled a lot of, of flights to smaller markets like Evansville. I think Evansville, I might, I may be wrong on this, but I think Evansville lost four carriers in, in one month. It's, it's, it's horrible right now. So right now, the outlook is not very good for us subtracting any kind of regularly scheduled air carrier service, unfortunately. I think it would be wonderful for the market. Maybe just have a daily to Chicago or I think there's even a market for, for the DC area eventually when they, when they have the personnel, but it's just not now.
Yeah. Michelle, should I ask a follow-up or? Already? I will not ask a follow-up.
Michelle, I should be seeing four different accounts here, but I'm only seeing two. Yeah. Yeah. Personnel.
And then there's the new supplies.
Gotcha. So you, you'll scroll down as I.
Yeah, I didn't know.
Awesome.
Where you were at.
Sometimes I can scroll down, but not in this case. Okay. Counsel, I'm gonna restate the aviation department totals for Fund one, one, zero, seven, zero, 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 aviation. In the personnel category, we've got seven hundred forty-eight thousand, sixty-seven dollars in the supplies category, one hundred fifty-one thousand, two hundred fifty dollars in the services category, four hundred and twelve, eight, four hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred dollars. And then in the capital category, thirty thousand dollars for a total of one million, three hundred forty-two thousand, one hundred seventeen dollars.
Thank you. Now, all those in favor of accepting the aviation department's budget request, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Now we are on to item seven, which is the Youth Services Bureau.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review. Fund one, 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 four, zero, one, six, six, let special purpose, Youth Services Bureau category requests of, in the personnel category, two million, twelve thousand, seven hundred fourteen dollars. In the supplies category, sixty-five thousand, six hundred dollars. In the services category, one hundred fifty-six thousand, fifty-five dollars. And in the capital category, thirty-four thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars for a total of two million, two hundred sixty-nine thousand, one hundred nineteen dollars.
Second.
Welcome, Judge Galvin.
Hello. Good evening. Well, do you want me to just start?
Yes.
Right in. Okay. Our twenty twenty-three budget request is about fifty thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars more than the twenty twenty-two budget request. And.
I'm sorry, I can barely hear you. Yeah, just a little.
So get closer. Now you can hear me? Okay. Our twenty twenty-three budget request is about fifty thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars more than a twenty twenty-three approved budget. However, I wanna note that the five percent COLA increase was seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars. So we were able in the O twos and O threes for Quest and Functional Family Therapy costs, they are reduced over the next three years. So they're less than what was approved in twenty twenty-two. And that's how we were able to make up that difference. We have asked for increases in food. We do have to feed the children. Shelter supplies, equipment and vehicle repairs. Because our, we ordered a bus and had it approved by the committee and paid for and all those things in twenty twenty. And we still don't have the bus yet because twelve passenger buses are really hard to get built into. We're working really hard with Richard Kreider right now to see if there's an alternative to the one that we ordered. And we're hopeful, but as our buses, they're really old, get older, the, it just costs more to get them repaired. And then last, our trash pickup has gone up five hundred dollars for the year, but gotta have your trash taken away. So those are the only increases that we've asked for. And again, the difference in our budget from last year is a fifty thousand dollar, four hundred and fifty-two dollar increase.
All right. Thank you. Are there any comments or questions to my left? Yes.
I guess I'd just like to know how things are working with the new positions.
Well, I'm glad you asked. We have, just on Monday, we finished our last meeting with MCCSC and finalized, the referrals are starting to come in for the Trensi program. So we did hire five new positions. So hiring, as you know, is a challenge. We did get them off fill. We have done onboarding and training. There's a lot of training that's required in background investigations if you're working with youth. So that took a minute, because this was improved in March of last year and we finally got them hired in the summer. And so we're starting the program and part of it. The Quest part of it, we're really excited about. We've started working with them closely. So we're gonna actually have software that can give you hard data someday. Hopefully by next year, we'll be able to provide you an answer, any questions that you have. So that has begun. We have our staff trained on seeking safety, which is the adolescent substance abuse program. We're not launching that one quite yet, because school needs to be going for a while and we wanna do these one at a time as we begin them since they are pilots. And there may be youth that would be involved in both. You might be truant and also have a substance abuse issue. And it's really hard to ask a youth to come to three or four meetings a week. That's a little much. Especially if we want them in pro-social activities like sports as well. So we're, things are happening and it's exciting. And we're hopeful. But by next, early next year, we should be able to give you some more substantive information.
That's great. I'm glad you were able to actually fill the positions. I know that's.
Yes, me too.
Yes, I've mentioned this in the past. Few years ago, we were able to see routinely the head count that you have, how many guests you had and whether, which ones were from Monroe County. Not, of course, the person's name, but let's say if you had five and two of them were from Owen County.
Okay.
We had, we saw that routinely. It was sent to us before.
Oh. That was before my time. I didn't know that.
I'm just saying, we used to always get that. Oh, because we really sort of demanded it. Because the public wants to know, are we taking care of Monroe County's children? Or are they paying this tax rather large revenue sum that locals are paying? Remember, the other counties aren't paying this. They want to know how many are you that this is taken care of. So I think that's the accountable thing to do.
Okay. Do you, did you get that in an email or how was that reported?
It was actually a, a daily login sheet. You could see how many males, how many females. And whether or not it was a parental placement.
But how did we get it? I, I, I remember getting it. I don't remember when.
From the director.
You know, I've never been accused of not being, being able to be heard before Kim, to be honest. Marty, I can't remember if that was Kim Meyer, our director at the time, who used to send that out. I think that may be what you're referring to, but we can certainly get that for you. Make sure you get it.
I mean, it certainly was not, it didn't have anyone's name on it. No, we, yeah, I mean, I understand you would do that. But there's a login sheet, or I assume you still have your login sheet once, you know, when you have you staying there, you've got the name, you've got the county they're from and what kind of placement they are. And that's, I think, is an appropriate thing for us to know how we're working together for Monroe County youth.
We, yes, we would do a report through our software. We don't have the login sheets anymore, but we could get that to you and I'm just sending in an email to everyone.
That would be fantastic. Thank you.
Sure.
Counsel, McKim?
Yeah. So of course, Judge Galvin, you will be retiring soon. And I, I'm wondering if the Board of Judges has made a decision yet on who will be taking your caseload and working with the.
Well, not officially.
Okay.
Yeah. There's a Board of Judges meeting on September thirtieth, and I think they're gonna make those final determinations then. It's probably, probably not.
And I think they're going to make those final determinations then. It's probably, probably not appropriate for me to start naming names.
That, that's, that's fine. I just asked.
But I, I do think it will be somebody with knowledge, experience and someone I think you'll be very happy to work with.
Just between us.
Thank you. We won't tell anybody.
Any other distribution? Any questions or comments?
I just want to comment that it's been very rewarding to work with youth services. And to see their program develop and expand and expanding the services. And thank you to everyone on your team who's worked so hard.
I do want to say one thing. I would like to thank Lewis Malone for his 18 years of service for the youth of Monroe County. And he's awesome and I'm going to miss him a lot, but I just wanted to take a moment to say.
Ditto. We, we just, that was crushing to learn that he was leaving.
I didn't realize he'd been.
Outstanding.
That's a long time.
But he's still going to be serving the youth of Monroe County and his second love, which is soccer. So.
Yeah, it's fantastic.
It's great.
Yeah, congratulations to you, Liz.
My question is about other programs that are ongoing. And I'm sure in a forthcoming annual report, we're going to learn all about those. But, but you know, obviously as we're going through changes in our economy and our society, you know, how is safe place going? You know, are, how many, you know, are the days of service that you're providing? What's the trend line? Is it, is it dropping? Is it increasing? Like, how are we doing?
Well, I think we had more safe place this year than we've had in several prior years. Safe place, kids putting themselves in, yes. I would say that maybe even double.
We are higher than we've been. Our trend is up. If that, that's a question.
Yeah, please.
Apologies. Yeah, our trend, we're trending up both on calls, referrals, and then people accessing the service. Sometimes not even for shelter stays, which is obviously ideal. Sometimes it's just accessing clinical services, like getting the help they need, getting them reunified, getting them back home. Which is a connection of what DCS and RHY would call prevention services. Which is obviously the safety coordinator is paid through the RHY budget. So that's really appropriate for that. So we are good utilization. Obviously, we're always trying to work ourselves out of a job. But so, so, but I'm, we're glad people are giving us a call and the kids are getting where they need to be.
Sorry. But I would just say that. Financial instability right now certainly factors into this theater. I, I would also say we're starting, we, we're seeing a certain increase in mental health cases. We certainly see it among adults. We're seeing it for juveniles as well. All of this factors into the numbers that we get and that are. I don't want to say we're seeing an increase across the board. We're certainly seeing people at crisis.
I'll give you an example. Today, just before I came over here, there were two referrals. Both were for youth that would be exiting from Meadows Hospital. That had been in foster care before and have been, their placements disrupted and the foster families won't take them back. And there's no place to put them. So those, they're a little tougher situations than we're, that are common. And that's a trend right now that's very difficult to deal with, but we're doing our best.
I, I, that's, I don't know what to say about that, other than it's disappointing to hear. But I'm also encouraged that there's a lot of people in this room right now that will be at the mental health summit coming up in October. We're excited to see that report, reports coming out of the state in October as well. So, and I mean, we're just really excited that we can, you know, be able to invest in your work tonight. Well, we're not going to vote on it tonight, but yeah, keep up the good work.
Any other questions or comments from counsel?
Sorry, I just, just on the subject of retirement, I did want to congratulate you for your, your impending retirement. Thank you for all your years of service. I assume this is going to be your last budget hearing. And you know, I, I think that your judicial philosophy and work and, and, and youth services and leadership. Along with the, the staff of the Youth Services Bureau have really, why we're not talking about building a juvenile detention center here. I mean, this is really important stuff and Monroe County remains a, you know, I think, remains a beacon of hope. And a model for other, other counties and communities. So thank you and all, all the staff and the other Board of Jud, the members of the Board of Judges as well for everything.
And I, I would just say that I should be remiss if I didn't point out that. What I've done as a juvenile judge is a carryover from my predecessor who was Judge Viola Taliaferro. And you, I know that I always bring up her name. I do not want people to forget Judge Vi. As she is, she established something that was years ahead of her time for Monroe County. It not only saved children, it saved money. It, it has been wonderful. And when you see the kind of staff that we have that are able to implement this through YSB, through my probation staff. They're the real heroes. They're the people who've done the work and they do it day to day. So I appreciate your, your comments, Jeff. I just would point out that whatever you say about me really needs to be said about the people who I work with every day.
And it has to be said, it just has to be said. That we learned all about Judge Galvin way before he was Judge Galvin. Because he was our county council attorney. And we had, that was back when we had a welfare budget. But he also worked for what we called the welfare. It was the Department of Child Services. And so we learned a lot about where children were placed. And, and what was best for the child, not just what was the less, lesser amount of money. And it was because of Judge, who's now Judge Galvin, but also Judge Vitale Faro. That we made certain this county paid more in taxes. Because we wanted our youth to go for treatment and not be in lockup juvenile facilities. Which, as you know, I fought that. I was like the bad guy who kept saying, we do not want a lockup facility. We want treatment. And so I appreciate all those years that you worked so hard for this county and the children here.
I, I would just say also, when I sit and I look at the council, I know, I see you all. But I also see the people who come before you and you're part of a long legacy. The Norm Andersons, Tech McLongs, Morris Binkley, David Hamilton, Joyce Polling. I look around here and I see those are people who've come before. Marty, you're still here. I can't even say, I would say Marty Hawk, but there she is.
And I'm still here.
But I know that I, I'm aware of how difficult your job can be. And having been 18 years ago, I was sitting where Molly was sitting. I want to say that I appreciate how much myself, what you do means to the people of this county and how difficult it is. I'm also aware that Jeff McKim will be leaving, not this year, but next year. Is that correct?
No, I got, I got two more.
Two more years.
Don't scare me like that.
Anyway, I just, I just want you to know that we appreciate what you do. It means a great deal to everybody. And when you sit in those seats, you're sitting in the seats of some great folks who've come before and done the same thing. So appreciate that.
Thank you. No pressure, guys. No pressure. And. More comments. I think that's good. I'd like to. Approve a budget. All those in favor of accepting the court's general fund budget request, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. And now we have the lit special purpose. Thank you.
Counsel, I moved open for discussion and review Fund 10000225. General Fund Courts category requests of, in the personnel category, 3,409,837. In the supplies category, 29,051. In the services category, 743,332. For a to, for a total of 4,182,210.
Second.
Welcome.
Hello.
It's good to see you, Judge.
Hello, thank you for having us. I'm going to let Lisa present because she knows a lot more than I do. And I'm here to answer any questions and do whatever, but thank you and good evening. And we'll quit talking so that we don't have to spend all night here.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay, in this budget, I changed all the salaries per counsel's suggestion at the 5%. The only two things that I made any changes to in this is in the guardian ad litem. I increased that because the hourly rate increased this year. So I will need extra to cover that increase for next year. And in the special services, our mental health, as you guys have heard me say this over and over again, has drastically increased again. I have right now, we have 50,000 total in special services. As of today, 37,423.50 of that 50,000 has been spent on evals. And the, the rest, I call them the non-evals, is only 7,700. I did check right now. I have 10 outstanding invoices that will be coming to me that have already been scheduled by the psychiatrists and psychologists. They average $1,500 each. So that's an additional $15,000. So when those bills all come in, I will actually spend $52,423 of my 50,000. So that is why I have obviously increased that. And I have done that in the juvenile budget also, which will, I'm sorry, no, that was during ad limes. I have increased that one here from just a 50 to 85. Again, I don't even know if that's even going to be enough for next year. I know I did speak, speak to my two liaisons, Mr. Iverson and Mr. McKim about asking if we want to separate those out. Like we did a couple of years ago when we had my guardian ad litem and my public defenders all in one line. I think it was Mr. McKim that requested that and it was approved and we split that out to make it easier. So that is another suggestion. Obviously, I need that to be increased or if we split it. Among the special services and the separate mental health.
What was the second, the, the two categories, special?
It's special services is what my mental health is in right now. So instead split it, give mental health its own line and then special services will still stay special services.
Got it. Okay. Um. Questions or thoughts or emotions? Yes.
Sorry, can you repeat the, how much you have spent of the 50,000 for the evaluations? Do you want me to include the 15,000 that are outstanding right now? Please. That would be 52,423.50. And that's just for mental health evals.
Okay, thank you.
And Michelle, do we have an existing line for mental health evaluations? Was that what you were suggesting the title would be?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure. And how much would that be?
Well, let's see, I was asking for the 85,000 and I'm usually only about maybe say 10,000, I would say in special services. So if I went 10,000 and then 75,000, at least it's a starting place.
Yeah, I've just always found special services to be a particularly unuseful category as far as.
Well.
I mean, it's not your fault. That's just the, the name of the line.
That includes my interpreting that when the interpreter grant runs out and they, interpreter grant is only for certified interpreters. So the other part of my, called my non-evaluation part of special services is interpreting, shredding, settlement conferences, depositions, investigations. When we have an outside appointed public defender. So that's the other non-evaluations I have to cover in that category.
I do like the idea of splitting out the mental health evaluations, if that is a, if we have a line that we could use, it's, it's close. We could move on if anybody else.
Wait, I'll just, you know, for the record, I think that's a really good idea too. Especially if, you know, these expenditures are going to be so significant and. It'd be good to suss it out.
No, we do not. So you can just move to have it to be announced or to be determined and I'll create.
Create a line number. Okay, all right, counsel, I move that we, let's see, reduce line 32710 special services to $10,000. But create a new line in the services category, mental health evaluations with a line to be determined. And set that amount at $75,000.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? Nope. All right, all in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Any questions or comments on the budget generally?
And just since the, it's going to remain in the services category, there's no changes. So that it doesn't have to be rewritten.
Questions? All right, well, in that case, if there aren't any other questions, we will go ahead and vote. So. All those in favor of accepting the court's general fund budget requests, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. And we move to eight B.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review Fund 1114025. Lit special purpose courts category requests of, in the personnel category, 163,473. In the supplies category, 2,625. In the services category, 256,046. For a total of 422,144.
Second.
Okay, in this line, I only increased again the three positions for employees due to the request of the council. The only difference I actually made in this is the guardian ad line, I increased it by $5,000 again because of the hourly rate that went up. Other than that, everything stayed the same.
Any questions on this budget from counsel? All in favor of accepting the court's lit special purpose fund budget requests, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Moving on. Now we have public safety.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review Fund 11700225. Public Safety Lit Courts category requests of 261,557. In the services category, for a total of 261,557.
Second.
Okay, this budget covers the ASI guards in the Curry Community Corrections and Justice Building pursuant to the contract they have with the commissioners. I was informed that there is what also go up by the 5% due to what the employees would get. So that's the only thing that's in this budget.
Okay, are there any questions from counsel? Do you have any idea how many security guards there are?
I know there's one in the Justice Building, two in the Curry Building and four down at Community Corrections.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you. If there are no questions, we will go ahead and vote on this one as well. All those in favor of accepting the court's public safety lit fund budget. Requests, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Eight D.
Counsel, I moved open for discussion and review Fund 220000000. Alternative Dispute Resolution Fund category requests of 500 in the supplies category, 13,200 in the services category. $1,000 in the capital category, for a total of 14,700.
Second.
Okay, this budget is exactly the same as it was last year. So we've made absolutely no changes.
There you go. Are there any questions, comments? No, no, all right. All those in favor of accepting the court's alternative dispute resolution fund budget request, say aye. All opposed, say nay.
And no twenties or thirties. But Lisa Abraham found out that our clerk is going to be ending a postage contract that we were part of. The court was part of and probation was part of. And that she believes we have enough money to get through postage through November of two thousand twenty-three. So we requested Lisa's guess of about a thousand dollars to get us through the rest of two thousand twenty-three. Uh, and we're going to spend some time trying to figure out how, what we're going to do to replace the contract that the clerk currently has for postage uh for the courts and probation. That's the only other difference. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, questions to my left, looking at you.
Oh, yes, I think it probably kind of is no surprise to you that I have concern that the council received information from council office as a reminder that there was uh some discussion about reducing those uh the reliance on longevity um for all of county government. And to be able to step that back and phase that in, there would be no longevity for any new hires and so forth. So I find it uh concerning that we would add more people onto longevity when we're saying to those people uh that's not in the probation department. Remember probation officers salaries is set by the state. We could always pay more. I mean, we could always pay more to, you know, the assessor's office or the court's office. We can raise salaries. But uh the state tells us, so they get them raised when no one else does. And sometimes the rest of us get a raise later. And so um Indiana County Council's Legislative Group, they're working toward, and of course, we've been working on this for years. Uh, they say if the state is going to set the salaries and compensations for probation officers, they really should just take it over like they do uh judges and so forth. I don't know how far that's going, but certainly uh I I understand you've had a lot of turnover. I think probably on the newer folks that's been ju- just because who would want this job in this day and age? It's just getting more and more dangerous. I don't know how saying well, but we'll start you out by next year, giving you an extra, what? Five or six hundred dollars or something? I think if somebody wants to leave the probation department, they're not going to stay for another five hundred dollars or a thousand dollars, whatever. Uh, but at any rate, those are my concerns. And I understand that many of you would like to go ahead and get them started on longevity and then we'll just pull it back next year. I mean, what are we doing? It seems to me this was a discussion we should have had in a work session or with the elected officials. We've still have that to be determined. So maybe this should be determined to be discussed at that time. And yes, I stepped right out there and made sure everybody's mad at me. So I've got broad shoulders along with the rest of our brother, so.
No, if I can respond. I don't know because I'm not privy to obviously what discussions there have been amongst council about longevity across the county. Um, no, I'm not mad at you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Hawke, we've known each other a long time and your interest has always been for serving the people in Monroe County and making sure that the people in Monroe County were cared for. Our position is this, in two thousand and three, which was before I became a judge. Um, stopped to think of it, I've been a judge as long as Judge Galvin. I don't know if I want to think about that, but anyway. Um, in two thousand and three, when the um state mandated minimum salary for probation officers, the reason it was done, as I understand it, is because there were probation officers across the state who were barely existing on what they were getting paid. And the state believed that it was more fair to make sure that there was a minimum to make sure that probation officers were at least being recognized with a minimum salary. And so in two thousand and three, the council, the Monroe, the Monroe County Council said, all right, we'll do that. But we're going to, then we're going to not pay probation officers their salary. As I understand it, then at that time, there were, I believe, three steps for county employees. There are now twenty-five steps. Um, there are twenty steps for probation officers, so that has changed drastically. But to me, the most important thing about this is this. I have probation officers and community corrections officers that have worked for this county loyally, with dedication and with commitment. They have done it through COVID. They have done it through all kinds of things. They come to work, they do it, they deal with our people. And we say to them, treat these people with compassion. Treat these people, meet them where they are, take care of them, take care of their needs, recognize them. And then we are saying to them, ha, but however, you're not going to get treated the same as everybody, other, every other employee in the county. I get that they get minimum salaries and sometimes it's more and sometimes it's less. It just depends upon what's happening. They've dealt with that, but to me, the longevity says you are an employee here. You are important to us here. We recognize what you do and we want to recognize that. And to me and to us judges, that's very, very important. It's saying to them, you are part of what we do. And I don't think, and we don't think that they should be penalized because the state sets the minimum salaries. It's not their fault and it's, you know, and and truthfully, as as we've been, as we've been pointing out to you, there are surrounding counties where they are paying way over minimum salaries to keep probation officers. We are nine down. We are still trying to give the services we do. We are still trying to service the people we need. We became a pre-trial um uh pre-trial release county a few years ago. We began the pilot to try to keep people out of the jail and get them the services they need. And we need to recognize that we have people who are doing that. And I recognize that they they are, they're different because of the minimum, the minimum set standard. But I I and the judges don't believe that they shouldn't be entitled to the longevity. I will tell you, this is very, very important to us. This is something that we truly believe is what they should have. And we are asking you to do that, to recognize that these employees are this important and they should get this longevity. It's not a great amount of money. It truly is not when you look at the budgets, but it is going to mean something to especially the people who have been here a long time. And we're having difficult time finding probation officers as everybody else is, as everybody else is having trouble finding people. But um we just lost a probation officer to Brown County. And when I was at the judicial conference and I saw that judge, I was like, do you feel bad? And she was like, no, I don't feel bad. Um, I'm glad that I got her. I'm like, yeah, well, you should be, but so it's, it's, we're trying our best, but I I I and the judges believe that you recognize them by restoring the longevity is a very important step to saying that you should stay in Monroe County, that you should stay doing what you're doing for us and for the community. Um, we appreciate the work that you do and you are important as an employee. So that's why we're asking you for this and we put it in the budget this year.
Okay, um, yes, Councilman McKinn.
So, you know, on on the longevity issue, I I I know I I'm probably in the subsequent comments will hear a variety of opinions on whether or not we should phase out longevity overall. I just want to make it clear there was a, I think Councilor Hawk made a a comment about new employees possibly no longer getting uh longevity. I just want to make it clear that that was simply a, one of a variety of policy options that came out of the council office as possibilities if we wanted to phase out uh longevity. There's been no, right, I know, which is, right, I know. It was just one, right, it was presented as one, you know, one of a number of possible options if we wanted to, which we know, we haven't had that discussion. So I just didn't want anybody to think that suddenly new employees are not going to get uh longevity. Uh, you know, I tend to not, I I understand the rationale for getting rid of longevity. I'm probably not one of the supporters of getting rid of longevity overall unless I hear some really good uh arguments. But regardless of whether we get rid of it or phase it out over a period of time, I I think probation office, I think it should be a level playing field. And so I I guess I see even if we're going to phase it out over a period of time, I don't see any reason why the current probation officers should be held back from that. I I can't see it, you know, uh, I simply that the state state sets a minimum salary doesn't seem like it's a good enough reason to me to not um not probably pay probation officers uh longevity. And I didn't, I I was unaware of the background of of how that happened back in, I think, what, two thousand and three? Was that um what you said? But I I can't see a good reason for not uh not paying probation officers longevity. So that's where I am on that. I totally support the moving of the uh adult probation officer into uh the general fund. I think the more we get away from user fee funded uh critical justice positions, the better. And I'm pretty much always going to vote for that when when the time comes.
Um, other comments from, yes?
I was just gonna say, um, I I mean, Judge Decoff basically outlined it um and and how I personally feel as the liaison to the probation department. Um, I don't think there's really much to say except for, we obviously know, like, just as, I mean, this is public safety and they're putting themselves on the line each and every day. And we get, it almost feels like daily, but it also seems like weekly updates as to, you know, you're losing people to various reasons. And again, we've had this conversation countless times during these budget sessions that, you know, Monroe County is not uh it it abnormal to the way that we are losing people. Um, we all know that that's a, it's a, it's a, it's something that's happening all over. But I do think that we can set the tone for our folks here at Monroe County, such as our probation department, to let them know, as you had just stated, that you are valued and you matter and we should pay you what you are worth. And so thank you very much for what you said. Um, I've learned very, a lot of things um from uh Linda as well. And I I thank you so much for all of that. I still feel like I'm I'm learning and and we've gotten lots of things. But again, I I, there's really not anything else to say, but I I will be supporting this. Um, and that's all I have to say about that.
Comments, uh, Councilman Munson?
So, thank you, Judge Decoff, for your explanations and comments. I want to throw out an idea that I had to make the the cost of living percentage uh be equivalent. While I realize that uh the state sets uh set an increase for next year of three point three three percent. We have been discussing, but it's not final, a five percent COLA increase. And if we want to be fair to probation officers, I think we might consider a special probation officer COLA of an additional uh one point six seven percent to equal what the county would be paying other employees. So that's just an idea that I want to share with my colleagues and have them think about.
Oh, Councilperson.
Uh, thank you all for being here and thank you for your remarks. Uh, you know, um, I I think that what uh Councilmember Munson just said, I think, is really important. I think we need a suite of tools um to address the the issues that you're facing, um particularly um as it's harder and harder to keep uh folks uh there. And I think longevity is one of those tools. I think we need to be creative about how we're thinking about this. Um, but I I wanted to to read a little bit from an email that you sent out to to all of us. And it it regards the enhanced supervision units. And I think this helped me think about this um in in a clearer way that just how skilled uh these these positions are. Uh, that the the ESUs, uh, that's enhanced supervision units, supervise sex offenders, offenders convicted of domestic violence offenses, offenders convicted of committing other serious violent offenses, and offenders suffering from serious mental illnesses. And these are folks that are not eligible for mental health court. Um, and I think you current, you currently have five POs assigned to the ESU. And how many vacancies do we have right now?
We, um, we just had another resignation for the end of November. So when he leaves in November, we will, four of the five will be gone uh for the enhanced supervision unit.
That is very concerning. And I think at at that point, we need to be addressing, or at least thinking very seriously about a whole range of tools to make sure that we're keeping folks here um and and doing this really important work. And I'm sure you could spend a lot of time talking about different areas where there there are vacancies as well. But I wanted to at least provide that context to say that that's where my thinking is. And I think it the very least we can do is provide longevity tonight to just, you know, to at least try and stem some of this tide.
Thank you very much for having this conversation with us. I think it's been very helpful and I'm glad to hear the council talking about it. Judge Linda, we have kind of informally talked about this for a long time and it has been on your radar even longer. And um I I, look, I've studied what the state does and does not do. And you can lose your mind watching that process and trying to find rationale. And sometimes they're smarter than us and sometimes they need some help. Uh, but for the folks that live in this community and serve this community, if we can provide equanimity in how we treat them in their service, I think we need to do it. And in this case, that means treating these tremendous employees um who really public service uh folks the same way that we treat other individuals. Um, as Linda and I have talked before, a different choice of my own personal fate. And I would have been one of these uh probation officers probably better off. I didn't head that route for the people of the county and maybe may maybe less service altogether. But if I were in that role, I would want to make sure that I, just as if I were before the judicial system, were treated fairly in comparison to others. And I think this is a good example of something we just have to do. I think it's a no-brainer. The other thing I want to say is your department, I've made this remark to you before, but your numbers, your data, the information you bring in here, you know, there's an old saying, you can eat off the floors of that clean kitchen. And this is a good example of a department that does that, brings those numbers in, informs us, influences the state, goes and people model things after you all. And that's the kind of thing you don't always get. And so I I did, I'm very grateful we're having this discussion. And um I like, of course, what I'm hearing, so thank you.
If I can boast for just a minute, um, our pre-trial is, um, Troy keeps amazing statistics. And our pre-trial, the um statistics we keep on pre-trial release, um, at this time, those are the, um, those are the numbers that the Supreme Court and that the state is using because we're the only county that has supplied those types of numbers and the only county that has been doing the work to be able to provide those kind of numbers. And those are the numbers that are now being used throughout the state to encourage other counties to to be doing pre-trial and to be looking at pre-trials. So sorry, I just had to go for a really second and uh, but.
It's quite all right. It's, it's, it's impressive. I don't need to repeat it, but um it, I'm always impressed about the the data that you bring. Um, I have to admit that um I had floated the idea of removing longevity from county employees. Um, because it, it wasn't my idea. It was in the um list report and the recommendations last year um indicating that we essentially double dip longevity. Obviously, we're not dipping at all for for you folks. Um, and I I don't, I I do think that that it makes sense to treat um probation a- as we do our own, um, our other own employees. Um, I'm not sure how to, you know, how to proceed on it. And um I I don't have a problem with adding um longevity back in. I just wanted to kind of come clean on the, on the idea of where that came from, which was, you know, I'd asked him to look into what are some options if we were to take this recommendation? Um, what would that look like and how big of a riot would I create? Apparently, a lot of a riot was part of the answer. But um I appreciate um you all being here. And I I wonder if I mean, longevity isn't going to get someone in the door. And so, you know, it it will maybe keep people from leaving after a number of years. Um, I'm wondering, what are your thoughts on recruitment and and getting more people? And and is there something we could be doing, the council could be doing to assist with that?
That was something that, and I agree with you that longevity, just five hundred dollars or wherever it is for a one-year PO, that's not going to keep a brand-new person. But people who've been here a long time, to me, I see that as a reward for staying. And 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 really, probation has changed from, I've been here thirty-seven years and the way it was that many years ago to the way it is now, it's a completely different job. Probation officers now have to, they're they're not counselors, but they are teaching cognitive behavioral skills to their clients. And that is not the way it used to be. It was much more of accountability and have you done your drug test? Have you gone to treatment? And now it's much more, what are the skills you need to not come back? What do I need to teach you so that you can make better choices in your life? It's much harder uh to do, it takes a lot more time. So um that's something that Peter and also Jennifer, as our liaisons, have said that to bring this up as a start of conversation with the budgets, because we don't think this is the end. We think we're, we're going to have to just start the conversation because right now with, we we have nine vacancies, but uh seven of those are probation officers. And I have, I've been at one position I've had open since October of of last year. And I I just really am kind of at a loss. But at this point, a starting salary of thirty-six thousand for a college graduate is just not going to cut it. Um, and and I heard Sam Crowe speak the other night um that the jailers were going to have a starting salary of forty-four thousand, which I think is great. I can, you know, my hat's off to him to get that kind of a start, starting salary. And and um that that's fantastic. But I have to point out that probation officers have to have a four-year degree in the kind of college debt that people come out of of school with to say you're going to earn thirty-six thousand dollars and oh, by the way, you have all these responsibilities. Thirty-six thousand is just not, it's just a non-starter for people when they see that. And when they see that there's a range, they ask, is there negotiation? Can we negotiate? And I have to say, no, it depends on your years of service as a probation officer. So when they say, I I just can't start at at, you know, at at thirty-six thousand. And Department of Child Services, they start at forty thousand and that requires a four-year degree. Indiana teachers start at forty thousand. So there there, I do hope there would be some more conversation for especially looking at other degree. I don't know if there are other positions in the county that require degrees. But um, you know, to have a degree and start at thirty-six, that's, I mean, you all can imagine, you probably know people who've been in college recently and who's just saying, okay, how do you feel about a thirty-six thousand starting? The people are just not, they're not even applying. And I I probably haven't had, I would say in the last month, I've had one probation officer application. I advertise on Indeed and all the places that, you know, I had one application in in the past, past month. So that's where I am right now. So I'm hoping this is the start of a conversation.
That's interesting. I'm wondering, that makes me think about the lower end of your salary scale and maybe looking at that specifically. Um, and seeing what we could do there. And I also wonder about advertising. I'm sure there are professional organizations and journals and things like that. I mean, if we could pay them more than thirty-some thousand dollars, perhaps advertising a little bit more broadly would attract somebody. But um, thank you, that's a lot of good information. Are there other questions or comments from council?
Okay, just that, uh, when we speak with the folks at the state level who changed this all around many years ago, I remember what happened. Uh, I was two at the time. I think we need to make that pitch to them because obviously who's going to come in to be a probation officer when you're getting paid in the thirties? Now, I did look at our, that big fat booklet that we got. And and so uh our probation officers, many of them are making a great deal more than what it says as that booklet. But that's because they don't have the experience, folks, that we have because they do have longevity already built in to their salaries. The state has that built in because they have all these different steps they have. Uh, and it also uh depending on how many people they oversee, then they get more steps up for that and more steps up for different education. I don't have it all memorized, but I've looked at it several times. Um, but it does seem to me what we have to look at is like that one group where it's only like four employees in that one group and pretty soon you're going to have zero left. Maybe that's where we should start. I I don't know. I I do know this much, if the state is going to continue to say, this is what you have to pay them, they don't tell us how many we have to have. And that was has was the argument from the county councils from the get-go. State may say we have to pay this much, but we don't, they don't say how many you have to have. And remember, our county has a lot more money to pay salaries than a lot of these smaller counties do have. Uh, and so I I don't doubt at all that the county councils would say, quit telling us what we have to do. We're we're going to have to lay off people in the auditor's office and the clerk's office or wherever just to pay the probation officers. And that's what some of those folks are up against, or they were a few years ago. So let's go to the state and talk with them as well.
Absolutely. Um, any other comments or questions to my left? All right. Okay. Then, all those in favor of accepting the probation department's general fund budget request, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Nay. Motion passes. There was a nay in case anyone's recording. Uh, now we're at ninety.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund one-one-one-four-zero-two-seven-three lit special purpose probation category requests of, in the personnel category, eight-hundred-fifty-three that, eight-hundred-fifty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-sixty-seven dollars in the supplies category, four thousand dollars, in the services category, ninety-two-thousand-five-hundred dollars, in the capital category, two thousand dollars, for a total of nine-hundred-fifty-two-thousand-three-hundred-sixty-seven dollars. Second.
Okay, this is basically our juvenile probation budget. And it it also includes what a probation officer longevity. And other than that, it's the usual same budget as last year.
All right, are there any questions? No, are the questions down to my right?
Yep.
Okay. We're on this one, right? I just want to leave the real thing. All those in favor of accepting the probation department's lit special purpose fund budget request, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes, nine C.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund one-one-seven-zero-zero-two-two-six public safety lit probation category requests of one-hundred-eighty-eight-thousand-fifty-two dollars in the personnel category, two-hundred-ninety-five-thousand-five-hundred-sixty dollars in the services category, for a total of four hu- four-hundred-eighty-three-thousand-six-hundred-twelve dollars. Second.
Yes, okay, there are um two staff persons, two probation officers in this fund. So this also includes probation officer longevity. Other than that, it's the same budget as last year.
All right. Um, questions to my left? No questions to my right? All right, then, all those in favor of accepting the probation department's public safety lit fund budget request, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Ninety.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund two-five-zero-four-zero-zero-zero-zero court alcohol drug user fee fund. Court alcohol drug user fee fund category requests of one hundred twenty six thousand four hundred eighty eight dollars. In the personnel category, ten thousand dollars. In the supplies category, forty one thousand six hundred dollars. In the services category, two thousand dollars. And the capital category for a total of one hundred eighty thousand eighty eight dollars. Second.
And this is our court alcohol and drug services fund. And it's a user fee fund paid by persons who are referred to our court alcohol and drug program. And it only has one full time probation officer in it. So it does include probation officer longevity. And just to remind the council, over the years, we've worked with you all to get persons out of this. It it many years ago, this funded seven full time employees. And it, we could not sustain this budget, obviously. And and depend on those kinds of fees. So it is sustainable with the budget that we have.
Okay, are there questions?
I'm sorry, and I should know the answer to this. What is AES prime, prime plus?
Alcohol Education School, which is alcohol and marijuana education school that our probation officers teach with prosecutors pretrial diversion program. And the Prime for Life is an substance abuse education program that our officers teach. You might consider it like a level two, a little more intensive class that we teach.
Okay, thank you. But why is it in the in the personnel category?
It it is paid like a stipend to the officers.
Oh, it is paid to.
Yeah, it's paid to the officers who teach it, right.
Sorry, I shouldn't have done that.
Yeah, yeah.
Every time, every year you notice something new about a budget.
And that's one thing with the turnover we've had, we've lost some of the teachers. So we're hoping to train some more to be able to, to be able to teach these classes.
Okay, questions to my right? All right, in that case, all those in favor of accepting the probation department's court alcohol drug user fee fund budget request, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Ninety.
Counsel, I moved open for discussion and review fund two five zero six zero 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 zero. Problem solving court user fee fund category requests of thirteen thousand four hundred fifty seven dollars. In the personnel category, two thousand dollars. In the supplies category, thirty three thousand fifty dollars. In the services category, two thousand dollars. In the capital category for a total of fifty thousand five hundred seven dollars. Second.
This is user fee fund generally funded by drug courts participants. And it's not used for a lot, but travel and training. So we can keep our problem solving court staff attending national trainings. And also to the drug testing, to keep the testing fees lower for the program participants. That's the main reason we use this.
Are there any questions to my left? Questions to my right, yes?
Yeah, I was actually going to ask about the drug testing, why you kept it flat, and you answered it, so that's.
Any other questions or comments from council? All right. All those in favor of accepting the probation department's problem solving court user fee budget request, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund two five zero eight zero 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 zero. Adult probation user fee fund category requests of two hundred ten thousand three hundred thirty nine dollars. In the personnel category, five thousand dollars. In the supplies category, twenty one thousand dollars. In the services category, two thousand dollars. In the capital category for a total of two hundred eighty three thousand three hundred thirty nine dollars.
Wait, can you, can you read that bottom line again?
Oh, I'm sorry. For a total of two hundred eighty three thousand three hundred thirty nine dollars.
I show two thirty eight, three thirty nine. Transposition.
Transposition. All right, let me read that bottom line as a correction. Two hundred thirty eight thousand three hundred thirty nine dollars. Second.
This is why it takes seven council members and their staff, right there.
This is another user fee fund for adult probation user fees. And we've already talked about that this fund, we've been kind of kicking down the road. We knew that at some point, this fund was not going to be sustainable with so many probation officers' funds. Salaries coming out of this fund, so we've already moved one over to the county general fund. And we zeroed out a line for nine nine ends in two nine nine is zeroed out for this year. And then we do have probation officer longevity. And other than that, it's the same budget as last year.
Are there any questions? Comments? Questions or comments this way? All those in favor of accepting the probation department's adult probation user fee fund budget request, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion pass.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund two five zero nine zero 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 zero. Juvenile probation user fee fund category requests of five thousand three hundred eighty three dollars. In the personnel category, three thousand dollars. In the supplies category, nine thousand dollars. Services category, one thousand five hundred dollars. In the capital category for a total of eighteen thousand eight hundred eighty three dollars. Second.
Juvenile probation user fees, just like it, like it says. However, we are no longer charging juvenile probation user fees. I want to point out, Judge, just looking around to see if Judge Galvin was was still in the room. Just, I really want to give him credit. As far as I know, he's the first judge in the state to stop charging juvenile user fees. Anything that is a non statutory fee for juveniles, he is no longer charging. And I really believe he's paving the way with that in the state. There's conversations at the state level about eliminating informal adjustment fees, which I think that's great. But we went further here in our county for even formal probation, for drug testing, for electronic monitoring. Any, any optional fee that a juvenile would have to pay for being on juvenile probation, Judge Galvin is no longer charging. And that's per policy, which the Board of Judges have adopted as a whole. So that he led the way and the judges adopted that. So I believe they deserve some kudos for that. So we've flatlined the budget. We may spend some of it. But we're basically using the juvenile special purpose lit for juvenile expenses.
That makes sense, thanks. Yes, I really believe that everyone who's paying into this income tax. And and it raises a substantial amount of money. Certainly makes up any small amount of money that would be reduced from the juvenile services fee. So weren't that many parents who could really afford to pay it anyway. And so it's the right thing to do.
Good point. Any other comments or questions?
Yes, Councilwoman.
So with no revenue coming into this fund, is this the last year you will have this fund?
We still have money in it. So if there, if if a juvenile, for example, came and paid, I mean, if they, if they wanted.
That was formally.
Right.
Set up to.
Right, if somebody wanted to pay old fees or something like that, they are welcome to pay. We won't, we won't turn them away. But but they're not being held accountable in any way as far as being charged or anything like that, right?
Thank you.
But every once in a while, people do, they have a windfall. They maybe sell a home or something and they, believe it or not, it really does happen. They come in and say they want to pay off all their old user fees from twenty years ago, and they do.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Um, all those in favor of accepting the probation department's juvenile probation user fee fund budget request, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. We are at nine H.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund two five one zero 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 zero. Project income user fee fund category requests of four hundred forty one thousand two hundred forty six dollars. In the personnel category, fifty six thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. In the supplies category, forty five thousand one hundred dollars. In the services category, two thousand five hundred dollars. In the capital category for a total of five hundred forty five thousand five hundred ninety six dollars. Second.
Community corrections user fees is what this is. And this budget, as I already mentioned, that our community corrections grant, it it doesn't pay a hundred percent of the salaries. That I know of of anybody in in the grant, they, it pays some magical portion. And they don't just say it's fifty percent or whatever. It's whatever magical portion that the DOC pays. And then the rest of it comes out of the project income budget. And I know Becca, who is on the line, she knows this. It'd be really nice if it was all forty percent or sixty percent or some percent, but it's not. That's why we have Becca and Troy to do the math. And the judge and I do not do the math. And so this budget just matches the community corrections grant. It does include probation officer longevity.
Questions, yes?
So you mentioned earlier that the the grant portion had been flatlined. And so this had, so I'm a little perplexed at why that would happen. I mean, given the fiscal state of the state of Indiana, that they have to rush up to Indianapolis to figure out how to send us all checks back.
So, so first of all, that's, first of all, for this year, this was year two of the biennium. So we knew that there wasn't more money in year two of the biennium. So that was one thing. And Troy might have more to comment on this too. But when the DOC issued the grants, they actually issued more than was allocated in the the biennial budget. So in other words, they were spent out reversions. They knew that they were going to get some reversions. And so they they spent out a lot of what they thought would be reversions. But at least a few years ago, we were told that the reason that DOC did not ask for more money for these grants was because their priority was a new prison. Now, I am not privy to know what is in the mind of the DOC at this point, what the priorities are. I don't know if anybody's table is. But I I haven't heard what their priorities are. But we went on the, the state J RAC, which is the Justice Reinvestment Advisory Council. The DOC representatives who were there were very clear with all of us that the the governor's priority was a new prison. And there there would be no money, additional money asked for in the community corrections grant. Now Troy is now the president of the Probation Officers Professional Association, Popeye. And so he sits on the J RAC. And I don't know if there's been anything discussed about that, or if the DOC has said anything.
Yes, so far in my conversations with that group and that committee, we haven't heard any new requests.
So far, we haven't heard any new requests or any details of new requests about funding for community corrections next year. As Linda said, we're in that second year, community corrections is funded about seventy two, seventy three million dollars in the state. And it's a non reverting fund. So any of those reversions that come back to the state, they have been doling them back out to the counties. But we are flatlined for twenty twenty three in terms of what we're given. We already know that. We actually found that out a couple of weeks ago. And again, we're waiting to see. The other kind of piece of the puzzle that we deal with that kind of coincides with project income funding is we received two grants from the Indian Office Court Services. Received a grant for Veterans Court, which helps pay for one of our case managers. And one case manager, our problem solving court for Veterans Court. And the other one is our pretrial services grant that pays for a pretrial services officer. And also helps supplement a little bit of the public defender costs associated with the pretrial program. We received notice of those grants. Seemed a very, I think, a small increase. Actually, we received it was very nominal if there's an increase or a decrease in either of those two grants going into twenty twenty three. We received word of those just recently after budgets were due. And you will notice in the project income fund, there are two new lines in there. One is, the top one is ten fifty five, or I'm sorry, one hundred fifty five or one zero zero five five. And that's the, that would supplement our veterans court. I kind of put that line in there just in case we needed to supplement, in case that grant was cut. We should have enough to cover that salary, so that one dollar we won't spend in there. And then the other one is fourteen three hundred. And that will coincide with the pretrial services officer, that I O C S grant. And you'll see, I put eleven thousand dollars in that line because that is what's needed. Because that grant, they capped the amount of benefits, the fringe benefits that are available to all grantees in that grant. As well as the salary was capped too. So that's why there's a supplement in it for that.
Thank you.
Other questions? Comments? Right. All those in favor of accepting the probation department, I've forgotten what we're on, I, sorry. All those in favor of accepting the probation department's offender transportation fund budget? I thought we already done that, I'm sorry. All those in favor of accepting the probation department's project income user fee fund budget requests, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Many apologies.
Counsel, I moved open for discussion and review fund four nine one six zero 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 zero. Probation offender transportation fund category requests of three thousand dollars. In the services category for a total of three thousand dollars. Second.
Just want to say a shout out to Eric Spoonmore because this was his favorite budget. For one, it's the last budget, but the other is, it's a silly budget. Because it can only be spent on retaking probationers who violate probation in another state. We can use this money to go retake them. And we can only use this money to go retake them. And we have never used this money to go retake them. It could happen, but it has not happened yet, so.
How is it funded?
It is funded by the offenders who are wanting to be transferred to another state for supervision. They pay a fee, and I can't remember how much it is, two twenty five, it's gone up. And half of that goes to the state and half of it stays in this fund.
Interesting.
And that's the law, yes.
And so it just accumulates?
Pardon?
It just accumulates. Wild. Any questions about this delightful little budget? All right, all those in favor of accepting the probation department's offender transportation fund budget request, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. And that concludes the budget reviews for probation department.
If I may, um, Councilwoman Iverson referred to it. There's going to be a mental health summit that the Supreme Court is putting on in October. What we were told at the judicial conference is that apparently the General Assembly is looking to make some significant changes to the competency laws. The mental health laws to try to make things more, move quicker and to be able to be more cost effective. It's so, it's, it's, we're all hopeful that we're going to get some answers to some of the dilemmas that we find ourselves in. I know that the sheriffs across the state especially are very interested in what what is going to happen. And if there's going to be any kind of new treatment facilities or whatnot. And also to answer Councilwoman Hawke's concern, there was, there is also conversations with the, from the Supreme Court to the General Assembly about taking over some of the costs for some court personnel in court. How, where that's going to go, how long that's going to take, I don't know. But but the Supreme Court is, has been pursuing that with the General Assembly to talk about trying to get some of, on the costs out of the counties. And and put it on the state, so we'll see about that. And finally, I, I, and the judges want to thank you very, very much. And we know that you get a lot of requests and take a lot of time, and we appreciate your time. We very much appreciate the longevity and what you do as well. Because as we say to people when we go out of here, when I go, especially when we were at the last conference and people are making wobbly noses about their counsel, we don't. And we realize that we're fortunate to have the counsel that we do here in Monroe County and the village to work with you. So thank you very much. And if we can ever answer any questions or do anything for you, please let us know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Are there any final comments from any council members? For the evening? Then meeting will be recessed until Wednesday, September fourteenth, twenty twenty-two at five PM. And as a reminder, that's tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.